We have a change in personnel up front here for this evening. I'll ask the town administrator to make an introduction.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce Mike Terry, town council for this evening, from our firm, Petrinian Associates, Mike Terry.
Okay. I will direct you at this point to page 26 in your booklet, which is the end of the budget, annual budget. We still have a few budget items to pass at this time. And we're now on Tohonto capital assessment. I'll call on the Finance Committee for motion. Mr. Schultz.
I move to transfer for free cash $38,253 to fund item 107 and to raise and appropriate[67.48][67.48]$459,935 to fund item 108 as recommended by the Finance Committee for FY 2025.
Thirty-eight thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars for item 107 and $459,935 for item 108. Do you have anything to say on that? Anyone else want to speak on this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote by voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Next item is Tohonto debt repayment.
That was just covered in that.
Oh, that was in that one. I'm sorry. Your next motion?
I move to raise and appropriate $22,000 to fund item 110 as recommended by the Finance Committee for FY 2025.
The motion is for $22,000 to handle item 110, which is the intermunicipal animal control officer.
No, it's 110 expenses for the animal.
Yeah, expenses of that, yes. Anything to be said on that motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes by unanimous vote. Okay. Next is miscellaneous benefits and insurance. Mary Porter.
Mr. Moderator. I move to raise and appropriate $1,851,005 to fund items, to fund items 111 through 118 as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025.
That's 500 less than what's in the...
Twenty-five.
Hmm? Oh, 2,500 less. Okay, yeah. Anything to be said on this motion? I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Now, we go back to Article 11. Page seven. Article 11. Municipal offices' maintenance. Do we have a motion under that? Peg Stone.
I move to transfer $32,000 from free cash to fund air duct cleaning and floor maintenance at the municipal offices.
That's in the same form as the printed motion. You want to speak to it, Peg?
Sure. So recently, we put a new HVAC on the municipal building. And well, when you put a new HVAC on top, you've really got to clean the ducts out underneath because they don't work as efficiently and effectively as possible. And plus to the sanitizing, well, it hasn't been done in a few years, 2018. So that is why we are asking for that amount of money for the air duct cleaning and the sanitizing.
Finance Committee has a written recommendation. Is there anything further?
No.
Anyone else want to ask about this? If not, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is as printed at the top of page eight in your booklet. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 12. Special Article Berlin Master Plan Update. Carolyn McDonald.
I move to transfer $15,000 from free cash to fund the town's master plan update.
I'm not hearing it as well as I should, so be careful. I'll be right into the mic. Motion to transfer $15,000 from free cash for the town's master plan update.
So every year, we ask for money to update the master plan. We do a little bit every year instead of in big lump sums. And that's what this money's for.
Finance Committee has a printed recommendation. Anything further?
No.
Anyone else want to speak to this? Yes.
Kim Bratton, 75, Boylston Road.
Push the pole of the microphone so you can really speak directly into it.
Kim Bratton, 75, Boylston Road. Just, is that 15,000 for like consulting fees or something? Just kind of want to know what type of expense it is.
Response from the planning board?
Tom Sanford, 425 Sawyer Hill Road, and Planning Board Chair. That fee is for help with consultants to help us pull this together.
Anyone else? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 13. Real and personal property revaluation.
I move to transfer $55,000 from free cash to fund the FY 26 real and personal property reevaluation as required by Mass. General Law.
Motion made and seconded in the form it is printed in your booklet. Peg, do you want to speak to it?
Unfortunately, this is an unfunded state mandate where the DOR, the Department of Revenue, requires all cities and towns to revalue the real and personal property that we all have once every five years. To certify this rate, it has to be done prior to being the, to having the rate set for the following fiscal year. Obviously, the objective is to ensure that all property is fully and fairly assessed. So this 55,000 is to do that.
Finance Committee have anything further? Anyone else want to speak? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 14. Transfer funds to OPEB stabilization fund.
I move to transfer $85,000 from free cash to the other post-employment benefit stabilization fund.
Motion made and seconded in the same form that it is in your booklet. Scott?
We passed last night the giving employees, post-retired employees health care benefits. One of the side effects of that is we have to have a fund that would continue to pay for the benefits in the event that the town would disappear. That law is put in place mostly for businesses, you know, if you're an employee of a company and the company goes bankrupt, to continue to have those health benefits paid for. And so we're required to put into a fund. Most towns fund that not fully. If we'd funded it fully, it's in the line here, it would put 3 million into the fund. Most towns fund it to about 10 to 20 percent. And so we're going to put a little bit aside every year from free cash to get up to that dollar amount. So putting money into this is coming out of free cash, not increased taxes, and does cover the town or cover the employees in the event the town is unable to meet our retirement benefits obligation.
Finance Committee have a further comment? You have a printed recommendation in favor by them. Do you want to speak to it?
Yes, please. Good evening again. Richard Hanks, I'm the Chair of the IAC. So one of the strategies that we came up with is that there's a mechanism that we can, if we once accumulate 250,000 in that account, we can invest in PRIT, which is a pension reserve investment trust. And by investing it in PRIT, you can take advantage of compounding interest. And what that is, what PRIT is, PRIT is, is a pooled investment fund that was initially started in 1983 so that the state could start investing pension money and then taking advantage of, again, compounding interest. And in the last 10 years, that fund has grown at 13.63 percent annually. So it performs very well. But again, we need to establish an initial $250,000 into it. And what the Select Board is trying to achieve here is throw a little bit of money in there each year so that we can get to that goal, so we can start taking advantage of compounding interest. So just a basic run-through that if, once we hit that initial 250, 250,000 initial investment that we can put into it, once you get that in there, just throwing a modest 36,000 annually into that, and if it does achieve 8 percent interest, at the end of that 30 years, that fund will be 6.5 million dollars. So eventually, it will be a self-sustaining fund. So that, if you do a quick math, that 36,000 that you're going to contribute, once you hit that 250, plus your initial 250, you're really going to be outlaying 1.5 million, which is a far cry from what, again, the estimated 3 million it costs over the 30 years that it's going to take to fund OPEB.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. $85,000 from free cash. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 15. Transfer funds for general stabilization.
Mr. Moderator. I move to transfer 177,787 dollars from free cash to the general stabilization fund.
And that, again, is in the same form as the motion in your book. The Finance Committee has a printed recommendation. Is there anybody else that wants to speak to this? If not, I'm going to ask you to vote. This is 177,787 dollars from free cash. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 16. Amend the revolving fund bylaw. This is about a new revolving fund.
Mr. Moderator. I move to establish a revolving fund for transfer station expenses pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, and to establish the annual expenditure limit for fiscal year 2025, and to amend the table under Article 20 of the Town of Berlin's general bylaws by inserting said revolving funds.
And the motion also contains the box that's shown in your book, showing the source of receipts and use of funds, and the authority to expend and the spending limit. So all of that that you see at the top of page 10 is included with this motion. Paul, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, it's really just an accounting function. We've worked with Kristin in June. The transfer station generates revenues from stickers and fee items, and this will allow us to expend money as needed for unexpected occurrences of the transfer station, whether it's repairs or things like that. Currently, we have to go through a big process, and there are delays involved with that. This would enable us just to deal with problems directly. And it has a spending limit of 200,000, and we can only spend what we have. We can't spend, if we only have $20,000, that's all we can spend, and there is no tax burden on this.
Essentially, it's my understanding that with this system, instead of taking in money over the year and then appropriating it next year, we can spend it in the year in which it's received. That's correct. And it's wash as far as what it costs the town, but it means that we can spend the money when it comes in instead of having it sit in an account waiting for next year. Correct. Finance Committee's comment. There is not a printed one, so I need one from you. Oh, you made the motion. I'm sorry. No. I need a recommendation.
Yeah, there was no Finance Committee vote because there was no funds being expended. It was just a creation of the revolving fund.
It's a simple majority vote, so. Yes.
Pete Mosier, Brigham Road. Why 200,000? Is there some math that went into that limit?
Kristin Rubin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So we looked at what their expense budget is every year and where they're tracking in terms of any overages that they've had. So what they have right now is what's called a offset receipts account, and that is kind of an old-school way of accounting, and it doesn't allow them to account for any additional expenses that might come in from things that come to the transfer station that they have to charge for. So the best example I can give is, say, someone comes and drops off 20 mattresses, and they have to charge a fee for that because there's a cost associated with getting rid of those mattresses. You don't know from year over year what those costs are going to be. So while their expense budget is typically hovering around, I believe it's usually 160, we gave a little bit of extra space for the possibility that there might be some large drop-offs at the transfer station that they then might have to expend funds to have them disposed of.
You can't spend more money than is there.
Correct.
And this will be our first year with this, and every year, we have to approve that spending limit again. So there'll be another shot at that another year. Anything else to be said on this? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor? Thank you. Article 17. Establish the revolving fund annual spending limits. You'll see the whole list here that we have to do every year in regard to those spending limits. It has to be renewed with each year. Chris Keefe.
I move to set the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year 2025, beginning on July 1, 2024, for the revolving funds established under Article 20 of the Town General Bylaws for certain departments, boards, committees, or officers, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as written in Article 17 of the warrant.
So that references the list of the different funds that exist and what the spending limit is for the coming year.
That was the description right there.
Anyone else want to speak on this? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 18. Bucket truck revolving fund. Peg?
I move to transfer $5,000 from free cash to fund the bucket truck revolving fund.
And we, this is in the same form as the motion on your warrant, and there's a printed Finance Committee recommendation in favor of it. Is there anything further to be said?
So as you know, Berlin and Clinton, or Clinton, received a state community grant for a shared bucket truck. What we found out is that, well, you need to put money aside in case, well, things break or maybe it needs an inspection sticker. So we're moving to put that money from our free cash, and Clinton will also match that money as well.
Does anyone else want to speak on it? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 19. Cable Access Committee peg spending.
Not my spending. I thought it was my spending my first year, but then I was sadly disappointed. I move to appropriate from the public educational and grant and government, PEG, access and cable-related fund the sum of 78,010 dollars as a grant to be used for fiscal year 2025 operating purposes in accordance with the PEG access grant and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F, three-fourths. Said sums to be expended by the Cable Access Committee.
Motion is made and seconded in the same form that it is in your booklet. Peg, do you want to speak to it?
This is something year over year that always comes before the town, and it's to take the money and appropriate it to help cover the cost of goods and services related to the operations of Berlin Cable, who are here tonight and are doing a wonderful job at putting out all our meetings. Oh, there they are. Hi. So that's what that is.
Anyone else want to speak to it? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Fire detail account.
I move to transfer $5,000 from Public Safety Stabilization Fund to the fire detail account.
$5,000 from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund to fire detail account. Krista?
This would create a fund to pay for fire and EMS...
Get closer to the mic, please.
Oops. This would create a fund to pay fire and EMS personnel for details and bill vendors for the cost of these details. And the $5,000 requested is startup funding to be able to pay personnel upfront as required by Mass. General Law while waiting for reimbursement from vendors.
Am I correct to understand we would not necessarily have to put money into this account each year?
That is correct.
Yeah. Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Anything further there? Anyone else want to speak on this? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 21.
I move to rescind the vote taken on June 19, 1996, to adopt Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21A and a half, to adopt Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21A, regarding additional compensation for Massachusetts-certified assessors.
Okay. Motion is in the same form as it was printed. Scott, you want to speak to it? Move the mic up so you're speaking directly into it.
In 1996, when we passed this, we had sort of part-time assessors, and 10 percent bonus for being certified was less than the state maximum for the assessors. We now have full-time assessors, and the law now allows for a bonus of $1,000, which is less than 10 percent. And so we're adopting the, it's pennies, but it's the idea of doing it correctly, that the $1,000 bonus is now generally what you get for being a certified assessor. And most towns now have adopted that as well, and so it keeps us sort of competitive with other towns.
Does anyone else want to speak to this? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 22. Transfer town-owned property to municipal affordable housing trust. Scott?
I move to pass over Article 22.
Motion made and seconded to pass over Article 22. Do you want to speak to that?
The Housing Trust is actually looking for some property to build a decent house in town, affordable house in town, probably with a nonprofit developer. This plot looked good. When we started looking for plots around town, there were some issues with this plot that make us not want to pursue it at this time, but we're going to continue looking for properties. And so we, the Housing Trust does take donations, too.
Anyone else want to speak to the motion to pass over? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 23. Community Preservation Act Budget for Fiscal '25. Tim Wheeler, Chair of the Community Preservation Act Committee.
Tim Wheeler, 232 Pluton Street. I move to approve the fiscal year '25 Community Preservation Act budget as described in Article 23 of the warrant.
And you see the list up above the motion. Motion made and seconded in the same form as it's printed. Tim, would you speak to this?
Yes, sir. Thank you. First, the committee would like to thank all of you for your continued support of the Community Preservation Act. It's had some significant impact on the town. We're proud of the fact that the Annual Report Committee put the basketball tennis courts, which were paid significantly by Community Preservation Act funds, on the cover of the Town Report this year. And, you know, there have been a number of successful projects already completed, and tonight, you're going to hear proposals for several more that the Community Preservation Act Committee has recommended. Right now, what we're doing is we're voting on the requirement to create a budget for the Community Preservation Act for the next fiscal year. So in the warrant, you see that there is, there was approximately $500,000 available. That comes from two sources, a fee that you voted several years ago to impose on real estate taxes, and then a match from the state. In some years, we've managed to capture almost 100 percent from the state, which, in Berlin's case, we're one of only 12 towns to have done that in the last two years. This year, the amount will be less than 100 percent because the revenue that the state took in is less. But the 500,000 that we anticipate, 10 percent of that needs to go into three distinct buckets. That's where the 49, 256 comes from. Community housing gets 10 percent. Community housing gets 10%. Historic preservation gets 10%. And open space and recreation get 10%. And then, we can take 5% of the amount and put it into administrative expenses, which, in this case, ends up being somewhat below $25,000, as you see. And a substantial amount of that gets returned to the general fund that we have for CPA, because we don't expend all those administrative funds. But in case there was a situation where we wanted to do tax title research on a property or an assess, I mean, an appraisal on a property, we could use those funds for that purpose. And then, the remainder gets put into a budgeted reserve account, which makes it available for us to utilize later in the year if we so choose. So that's what this motion is all about. And then, following this, there'll be some presentations by particular proponents for the use of CPA money for projects that they'd like to see you approve. And the committee has suggested that all those articles be put on the warrant, and we support those and hope you do, too. That's all I have right now.
We have printed recommendations from the Community Preservation Act Committee and from the Finance Committee. Are there others that wish to speak to this further? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 24, Community Preservation Act Projects for this year. And who has the motion for 24?
Carolyn McDonald, Gates Pond Road. I move to pass over Article 24.
Motion made and seconded to pass over Article 24. Carolyn?
So, the Conservation Commission is looking to do a feasibility study for the rail trail through Berlin, ultimately, all the way from Hudson to Clinton, but we're focusing right now up to Coburn Road, because that's the easiest portion. We've applied for a grant that will pay for 80% of the feasibility study, and we received, we received notice that we got an earmark from the state for money for the rail trail. But then, we didn't get the money. And we didn't get the money, and we didn't get the money. So, we applied for what we need, will need from CPA funds, with the hope that we would pull it, and the money from the state has come in, so we're pulling the article.
Anyone else want to speak on the motion to pass over? If not, I'll ask you to vote. We're just voting to pass over this article. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes by unanimous vote. Article 25, Community Preservation Act Municipal Affordable Housing Trust.
Lisa Isaki, 133 Derby Road.
You need to get closer to the mic, please.
Lisa Isaki, 133 Derby Road. I move the town appropriate this total sum of $200,000 from the Fund Balanced Reserve for Affordable Housing for fiscal year 2024 to construct affordable housing units and to develop a grant fund to assist low-income, first-time homebuyers. The Affordable Housing Trust was created at the last town meeting to provide a mechanism for us to effectively use the CPA funds. Our goal is to preserve and create affordable housing in town. A lot of you are aware that it took us a while to get to our 10%, which allowed developers to sort of come in and bypass a lot of the rules. We are there now. We would like to stay there, so we have the ability to continue to make those choices as to how our community grows. So, we've chosen a few projects that we are focusing on this year. Both of these have been successfully implemented in surrounding CPA communities, so we have a roadmap, and that ensures that we also meet the requirements of CPA funding, because there are sort of things, we have to make sure when we use this funding, that it stays within certain parameters. The first project is an Affordable Housing Down Payment Assistance Program, addressing the sort of preservation goal. In the past, Berlin has lost affordable home stock due to a buyer's inability to provide an adequate down payment. This program would provide funds to assist based on income criteria and home price. Buyers would be screened by an independent nonprofit and would be responsible for repaying funds on a sliding scale should they choose to sell before a set amount of time. The program that we are basing this on has been operating successfully in North Andover. They average about two grants a year. The trust feels it would be used a lot less here because of our size, but it would be a valuable tool to sort of broaden that buyer pool should, should we have an issue with the house not being able to be sold due to not having a buyer that can come up with that down payment. The second project, as Scott mentioned, we were looking at partnering with a nonprofit, something like Habitat for Humanity, and using tax title property to create some affordable housing. Unfortunately, we did need to pass over Article 22. We're going to continue to look at the tax title property in town. A lot of this property is not suitable for a developer or a bigger build, but it might be suitable for a smaller home such as Habitat would build. So, we would love to partner and have a community project like that, so we will continue to follow up on that, should we have the funding to do so.
Are there others that wish to speak? Lynn Ryan.
Lynn Ryan, 255 Central Street. Just a question. The first sentence, the last number in the sentence is 2024. Should that be 2025?
Should that be fiscal year 2025 or '24?
So, the Community Preservation Act objective has always been to utilize funds that we already have in hand. We voted tonight an estimated budget for '25, but we don't want to use that money. We want to use money that we have in hand from '24, and we want to stay in that cycle. And that makes June very, very happy, and if it makes June happy, it makes all of us happy. Okay?
Now, all we have to do is apply that to school budgets. Well, we all want to be happy about it. We have recommendation, printed recommendations from the Preservation, Community Preservation Act Committee and from the Finance Committee. Is there anything else to be said?
Jason Raul, 32 Lancaster Road. Your comment about the school is inappropriate as a moderator. The funding should be as it is, written. You made comments last night about sticking to the topic at hand. There's a lot of people in this room, and a lot of people here last night, that are very passionate about this school and how we provide. So, we're going to vote to put money aside for affordable housing. We're going to invite more people into our community. We also need to protect our school. I am all for affordable housing. I moved here for a small town. I grew up in a small town, and I want that for my kids. We need to do the right thing across the board. I don't like seeing the bickering going back and forth between school committee, anybody. We need to do the right thing. Appropriate comments, please.
I believe that the school committee, and the town, and all parties involved, want to be happy about how things are. We may not have reached that point yet, and that was all I was trying to say, is that we all want to be happy about it, and we want the school committee happy about it, too. At any rate, the motion at hand is the $200,000 from the Balanced Reserve Fund for Affordable I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carries in the affirmative. Article 26, Community Preservation Act Fiscal '25 Projects.
I move to appropriate the total sum of $20,000 from the Fund Balanced Reserve for Affordable Housing for fiscal year 2024 to pay a portion of the expense of engaging a part-time housing coordinator for FY '25 and FY '26. As with most town committees, the Housing Trust is made up entirely of volunteers of varying backgrounds. Every aspect of municipal government has become increasingly more complicated, and affordable housing is a very specific area that does not overlap with the responsibilities and knowledge base in town offices. These funds provide us with a shared resource through CMRPC to address the gap. Our coordinator, Jessica Chaudery, has already provided significant value. Just a few examples include applying for and receiving a technical assistance grant addressing best practices for accessory dwelling units, compiling, sorry, compiling an accessible story map for our housing production plan that can be viewed on the Housing Trust page of the town website, and recording and filing our eligible affordable housing stock. This regional, regional resource allows us to maintain continuity and regularly learn and share ideas with fellow communities.
We have positive recommendations from the Community Preservation Act Committee and the Finance Committee. Is there anything else anybody wants to say on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries in the affirmative. Article 27, Community Preservation Act, the Well and Irrigation System for South Commons.
Good evening. Greg Tattinall, 207 Linden Street. I move the town to appropriate the total sum of $300,000 from the fiscal year 2024 budgeted reserve for fiscal year 2024 for the installation of a well and irrigation system for the soccer and baseball fields and general turf improvements at South Commons.
Motion is made and seconded in the same form as the motion is printed in your booklet. Do you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, so, the reason before you guys this evening, I'm the president of Berlin Soccer. I'm in charge of the fields, lining the fields, painting the fields, laying them out. We've had issues with the fields for the past couple of years. They're in pretty tough shape at this point. At the end of 2023 season, there was no grass remaining on much of the 3-4 field, the 5-6 field, and the 7-8 field. The fields have hills and undulations throughout them, limiting where we can place fields in the South Common. Berlin Soccer Program has been growing over the years, and that's been putting more strain on the turf down there. That is due to the fact that we can only put fields in certain places, so we can't add more fields so that we can let fields rest. We have more teams playing on the same surfaces, and it's just resulting in turf loss. And again, you know, the fields are in just, in pretty tough shape at the moment. To start the season, we haven't actually even been able to play on the fields over there, other than the 1-2 fields. We've had to set up fields in the back here for the 3-4 and 5-6, just so that we could let seed that we had planted in the fall grow this spring, and hopefully, you know, we can move the games back onto those fields. This is obviously not a sustainable program for us to have to move fields over here and not use the fields that we have over there. So, the scope of the project is basically to start off by flattening the fields so that we can actually lay the fields out in a more sensible manner and have more fields down there, because we do need more fields, because we have more teams. So, basically, flattening the whole surface out. Then, we'd be installing an irrigation system. The water supply could be used for other purposes besides irrigation, the system, like a water supply for the pavilion that everyone has approved, possible future splash pad, if that's something that could get approved down the line, or water stations and stuff like that. So, we'd be installing the wells for the irrigation system, installing the irrigation system throughout the playing fields to ensure the sustainability of our playing surfaces and take pressure off our maintenance plan. Then, lastly, we'd be reseeding the fields with new grass for a better playing surface. What we have out there right now is about 70% clover, a lot of crabgrass, once that starts coming in. There's really not much grass out there at the moment. And if it continues on this course, the Shoba Valley Soccer League won't even let us play games, and we'll just have to play away games, because there's no grass to play on. And they will not let us play on it for safety reasons. So, the budget for the project, the turf improvements, which is the flattening of the fields, that is $50,000. Installing the wells for the irrigation system, that is $50,000. There'd have to be a shed to house the pump station for the wells. That's $10,000. The irrigation system itself is the majority of the cost, and that is $174,000. And then, part of this proposal is to install nets at the end of the 7-8 field. There actually used to be nets there a while back, when the field was rented by another team. They took the nets with them. But basically, at the end of the 7-8 field, the goals are right up against the hill and the woods, and there's constantly balls being kicked into the woods, and it's thick brush. And in the middle of games, kids having to go down and fish balls out of the woods down the hill is not really ideal. So, we're trying to install nets back at the end of the field on existing poles that are already there. That pretty much sums up the scope of the project.
We, we have written recommendations, unanimous recommendations, from the Community Preservation Act Committee and the Finance Committee. Does anyone else want to speak to this motion?
Thank you. My name is Patrick Higgins, 1163 Pleasant Street. Excuse me. I want to preface my comment by, I'm 37 years old. Been playing soccer for about.
You need to get closer to the microphone.
Is this better? Can you guys hear me in the back? Very good. Excuse me. My name is Patrick Higgins, 1163 Pleasant Street. I'd like to preface my comment by saying that I have been on this earth for 37 years. I started playing when I was about six years old. You guys can do the simple and easy math. I also have two young boys that play on those fields every single day. I organize my men's Division A league. We play on the backfield, and I can say without distinction that those fields are in very poor shape. As the gentleman that I am standing here in front of you, soccer and organized sports has led me to an honorable gentleman that I am today, kept me out of inappropriate behavior when I was a young kid, running in with the fall, with the wrong crowd, possibly even seeing myself off to war in Iraq and Afghanistan. I thank you for others that have served, but I'm glad that I didn't go. Organized sports kept me out of that, led me. Organized sports kept me out of that, led me to become the captain of my team at Fitchburg State. So I urge all of you today to think about that, maybe your son, your daughter, maybe as when you were younger, your first catch with your dad. It's an important thing for our children and for our community. Thank you.
Others? Pete?
Pete Mosher, Brigham Road. A couple of questions. The $300,000 is coming from the budgeted reserve. Can I get a sense? I'm sorry, I couldn't find in the reports what is the balance of the budgeted reserve? Where's that? What's the $300,000 due to that? And then as far as this amount, do we have like three quotes for this? We have a sort of round number of $300,000. How did we arrive at that number? And do we have quotes from different vendors and that sort of thing?
Do you have answers for him?
Yes. So I can't speak to the funds and the CPA accounts, but in terms of how we got to these numbers, myself and John Gloomack have met with multiple vendors. We started off with general numbers that we got from people, and then once things kind of moved along, we actually had the irrigation system engineered, and we have one quote from off the engineering from one irrigation company. If the project were to move forward, then we would get multiple quotes and move forward with the pricing. There was one other thing I just wanted to mention that I forgot to mention at the end of what I was saying before, but I just wanted to point out that there are, basically, the South Commons is one of the most widely used recreational spaces in town by the Berlins residents and the Berlins youth. Of the roughly 600 kids living in Berlins from ages zero to 19, over a third of them, over a third of them use those fields every weekend, if not half of them. So it's definitely a good investment in our community because it's so widely used. Just seeing what the difference has been in the tennis courts and the basketball courts now that they've been revamped, it just goes to show that, you know, if we take care of these surfaces and these fields, that, you know, it will pay itself back to the community.
Tim Wheeler?
Two points. One, one of the things that the Community Preservation Act Committee has been eager to pursue is opportunities to leverage money that we expend out of this account. And we were fortunate when we voted to buy the Horseshoe Pond property that $850,000 out of the 850,000, I think, that we expended out of CPA came back into CPA as a result of the Conservation Commission being able to get a grant from the state of Massachusetts. So that's the objective, and as a result, the budgeted reserve account is in very, very good shape right now. So this takes a chunk out of that, but this is money that we have in hand, and as we said, we voted tonight to put a significant amount of money back into the budgeted reserve account for fiscal '25. So again, our objective is to expend money that we already have in hand, not anticipated funds, and this money is coming out of an account that's got close to $400,000 in it. The second piece, of course, I've forgotten. So probably I'll just dismiss myself, and if I manage to have it revolve around, I'll come back.
Evy Duick?
Hello, everybody. Close enough to the mic. I'm Evy Duick. I'm from 48 Highland Street, and I think this is great. I'm excited about the soccer fields. My question relates to another beautiful recreation plan that I voted for. So are there recreation, you're on the Recreation Committee? And that is, if you all remember, a couple of years ago, we voted for that path that goes around the fields. Does anybody remember that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm a fan of that. So I guess my question is, can we do both of those? Not that the money's going to cover both, but I just want to make sure that whatever we do with the soccer fields doesn't mean that we can't do that path. Do you understand the question?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
You're going to answer her question?
Well, I'm not on the Recreation --
Oh, you're not on the Rec.
Well, I mean, I can't, I wasn't --
Well, can he answer her question on air?
What? What?
Can I answer the --
Mrs. Duick's question?
Oh, yes.
All right. So I am not on the Recreation Commission, Committee, but we have been working with them throughout this process, and we have been speaking with them about trying to create like a master plan for the South Commons that would include stuff like the trail around the outside and stuff like that with voter input and stuff like that, or community input. But basically creating like an actual well-thought-out plan instead of just plopping things here and plopping, plopping things there.
Please keep your voice level up so people can hear.
Sorry. Especially with the pavilion getting placed down there and stuff like that, this is a really good opportunity to kind of create a master plan for the area down there.
Mary Reddington?
Mary Reddington, Pleasant Street. So my property actually abuts that land, so I have one concern about fertilizer and whatnot running off into the water supply. And also, behind the school, the parking lot here, there is massive amounts of water that gathers. I know it abuts some conservation wetlands, and that's the problem, but I would like all of the land to be addressed at the same time if it were possible. And I'm also having a really tough time approving $300,000 for what you say is about 200 kids in town, when we just voted against about $1 million towards the school. So I'm just putting it out there. And if Tejano cancels all of their sports, there'll be plenty of soccer fields.
Okay. Was there a question there?
I think so.
Is there fertilizer? Is there anything to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Answer it quickly, please.
So regarding the fertilizer, that's part of the idea behind the irrigation system, is that it will take some of the pressure off fertilizer, because at this point, if we're not irrigating the grass surfaces, then the only way we can keep grass on them is by applying fertilizer. So having the irrigation system will help not have to use so much fertilizer and stuff like that. Regarding the wet areas, I can't really speak to that as part of this project, but I know that there was a question that I heard come up about wet areas and what the irrigation system was going to do to that, but the irrigation system won't be creating any more moisture. I mean, the sprinklers are on for a short period of time. It's meant to, you know, water the roots of the grass, but not create, you know, a muddy field, so it shouldn't affect anything in regards to that.
Tim?
So one of the strong concerns of the CPA Committee was whether this investment would be wisely maintained over time, and through the process, the proponents came back, and Kristin and the Finance Committee began to work on a long-term approach to making sure that a maintenance program could be funded on a sustained basis. And that was one of the key factors in the CPA Committee agreeing to support this project, because it is a significant investment, but it's a one-time investment that we believe has long-term implications, and the fact that the town has stepped up and assured the committee that they have the capacity to maintain this investment was a big plus in our mind.
Carolyn?
Carolyn McDonald, Gates Pond Road. I just want to say that I sit on CPA as the Conservation Representative, and Greg and John have both came to Conservation well prior to really developing this plan to see if we had any concerns. They've worked with both the CPA and Conservation to alleviate any concerns, specifically with the nets that they're going to hang in the back against the woods. We asked that those be able to be closed when they're not using the fields to prevent catching specifically birds of prey. And I just want to say they've acted in good faith. They've done everything that we've asked them to do, and we would be happy to work with them for Mary's issues, should that be wanted or needed.
Dave Weston?
Dave Westerling, 196 Linden Street. And I've done a lot of work in my career on irrigation systems and for cranberry bogs and golf courses and irrigation and apple trees, a lot of different things. I'm a civil engineer and a hydrologist. So I would like to, I really like this project, and I would like to, when you drill the well, I mean, this school is on, is a user of the water in that aquifer. I would like to make sure that the well, there's enough water in the aquifer to keep continuing water for this school and other, maybe other uses, but it would be a safe field, and that safe field would, that this well wouldn't impact that. So irrigation systems take a lot of water. It's not like a single-family house or anything, and it depends on the type of applications and other things. So there's a lot of variables. I'd just like to say that we should consider the effect on the aquifer and make sure there's enough water for the school. Thank you.
Brenna?
Brenna Ewing, 227 Pleasant Street. My question is, when this project is completed, will there be opportunity to apply for state federal grant money? I know that Massachusetts is pretty, pretty much in favor of soccer. Is there potentially grant money to come back in and refund the fund?
Anybody have an answer to that one? I guess we don't know. Mary Porter?
Mary Porter, 8 Highland Street. I want to speak both as a citizen in town as well as a member of the Finance Committee and just give you my, well, first of all, Evy Duick's question about having a walking trail around South Commons, I want to echo that. What is it, two, three miles? South Commons abuts Northbrook Village. It would be terrific for the seniors at Northbrook Village to have a safe place to walk, as well as, you know, kids in strollers. We could really use that space, and I think it's, I think we ought to be looking at that along with the soccer fields. But let's just focus on the soccer fields. I don't think, is there anybody here from Recreation Committee?
(inaudible)
Well, all right. But yeah, you don't need, I just want to make sure, just correct me if I get something wrong here. But, and so that's pretty much what I want to say as a citizen, and also Mary Reddington's comment, I think whatever we do in development in South Commons, we need to consider our abutters. And I'd put that to the CPA, the fellow Greg here involved, to make sure that a butter's concerned, to sit and meet with people. That's what we ought to do. That's how we get to a happy place, right? And then, and then I want to switch to my Finance Committee hat and say, it took me a while to understand the Community Preservation Act, and I'm going to guess that there's people here in the room that don't know much about it, about CPA. So it's a favorable form of funding. Just think about a piggy bank, and you put your pennies in the piggy bank, and our pennies are 3% of our tax, and you can opt out, right? So we put our pennies in the piggy, in the piggy bank, and the state comes along and says, oh, we have nickels in our piggy bank, we'll put some in yours. And so what we're doing is making a savings account to do big projects, but the problem is, the state has said, you can only do three things with this money in the piggy bank. You can do open space and recreation, you can do historic resources, and you can do affordable housing. Okay? So when I sit on the Finance Committee and I look at any spend of $300,000, it really gets my attention. I go, whoa, wait a minute, what are we doing? We're building a soccer field? And that was my initial reaction. But here's the thing, that CPA money is intended only for those three purposes. This is one of the three. We have a need in town, and one of the things that hasn't come out clearly here, we had an article about revolving funds. One of those revolving funds is recreation, up to $50,000 a year. So if we have soccer fields that meet standards, you know, in the area, in the community, Berlins can host soccer games, other towns can host events there, and actually have user fees come in and go into that revolving fund. So over time, this actually is a good investment in the larger area and in the town. And we on the Finance Committee have had the CPA people, whenever they come and meet with us, we put their feet to the fire and say, okay, the other thing about CPA money is it can only be used in the development phase of a project. All projects have to be maintained and operated, right? And so that's where Finance Committee comes in. We have, we're looking at an operating budget in the town. And so our challenge to the CPA folks is always, how are you going to pay for it over the long run? So as, who's, Tim, I think, where's he at? I think Tim mentioned that there is a plan put together. Kristin has worked on it, Kristin Rubin, our town administrator, with our folks in the Highway Department. And so we have a plan to keep, you know, to do what we need to do at South Commons. So we have cooperation between the Recreation Commission and the town to take care of that. And by the way, we on FinComs sat around and listened for a couple of years, people coming in for Recreation Commission, and they were basically the poop patrol because they had to take care of porta-potties and the geese that came and, you know, so the kids could play sports. So anyway, I'd like to see us get to that other level. And somebody made a comment too about, well, you know, the school funding, and then you want to do the soccer fields. Those are completely different funding pockets. You can't go from one to the other. And I find public finance very complex, and I've been working in this, you know, I've been volunteering in this area for a number of years. It's not easy, but I'd ask you to please trust me on that, that they don't, you can't mingle those kinds of funds together. And my view, I came around, and the people working on this project, like Greg and others, they went out and did their homework. They got, their initial proposal was not very encouraging, but they did their homework. They're doing all the right things. So I really do support this proposal. Thank you.
Do you want to speak to it?
Wayne Texera, Gates Pond Road, Berlins. I'm on the CPA Committee, and, you know, I was really skeptical, I'll be honest, when this proposal first came up, and I have to hand it to the group that did it. I mean, I think that this is a really good example of how committees and town residents can work together to come up with a good, a good end result, because, you know, they weren't, in all honesty, well-prepared when they first came in, but I think the guidance that we gave them, they listened to it. The comment about the trail going around, I did ask that question, because I said, wasn't that approved?
And my view, I, I came around and the people working on this project, like Greg and others, they went out and did their homework. They got, they, they, their initial proposal was not very encouraging, but they did their homework. They're doing all the right things. So I really do support this proposal. Thank you.
Do you want to speak to it?
Wayne Texera, Gates Pond Road, Berlin. I'm on the CPA committee and, you know, I was really skeptical, I'll be honest, when this proposal first came up. And I have to hand it to the group that did it. I mean, I think that this is a really good example of how committees and, and town residents can work together to come up with a good, a good end result because, you know, they weren't, in all honesty, well-prepared when they first came in. But I think the guidance that we, we gave them, they listened to it. The comment about the, the trail going around, I did ask that question because I said, wasn't that approved? Because I have a memory too. And the answer that I received was that they didn't do their homework. And so when they actually went to try to put it in, it was like three or four times the cost of what the funds were to actually complete that project. So the project was never used, never completed, the funds were never expended. And I don't know where exactly stands on it at this point. So that's one of the reasons our committee pushed this group to, and said, you know, you can't go in front of the town meeting and not have your ducks in a row and not have done your research and not understand, you know, what it's going to be. Yeah, there's still going to be more work, as Greg said, you know, to do the quoting and stuff like that once it's approved. But they've done the work. They know, you know, roughly what this is going to cost. It's not, hey, give me $400,000 for something and, you know, we'll, we'll get the details later. They've really done a lot of work. They've, they've been respectful of, you know, the ongoing costs. One comment I would say is that the town does pay already for maintenance of those fields. I mean, last year we had a lovely wet summer that we all wish we didn't have, but the year before we had, you know, burnt earth summer where everything burned. And so, you know, with, you know, the town is already paying for maintenance, for grass seed, for trying to keep things going there. And so I think this is a, a really good way to support the investment that we already do to, you know, have a good, good place for kids and for the town to enjoy those fields. So I do have to say that they've done a really great job and I do think we should support it.
Thank you. Kristin, did you want to speak to it?
I'll try to keep it brief. I understand recreation's not here tonight. That's sometimes understandable with a two-night unexpected town meeting. When I first started back in September of '22, the chair of recreation, Julie Lee, and I started having a lot of conversations about how we can expand recreational opportunities in Berlin for all ages. And one of the first things we talked about were how do we get programming in? How do we get the fields maintained? How do we get some type of part-time director involved? And the opportunity to do some type of summer camps? And the fields are a big part of that too. So one of the things that the select board initially did was they allocated $1,500 in ARPA money that was seed money to the recreation committee so they can start up some of those summer camps. And the revolving fund was mentioned. That money can go back into the revolving fund in terms of the fees that they charge for those camps. And then those can go back out to pay for some of these recreational services like recreation director and expenses and help to offset those. And it kind of has a snowball effect as it builds over the years. One of the things you need to have for that are the fields. I had a lot of questions too. I feel that it's important, part of my job is to make fiscally responsible recommendations. And one of the questions that we talked about a lot was how are we going to maintain this? If you're going to make a substantial investment of this size into those fields, I don't want five years from now, the fields to look terrible again because that's just a waste of money. So we did add money to the recreation budget that was approved last night for maintenance of the fields, for electricity for the irrigation, for annual maintenance of the irrigation system. And as was mentioned at one point, we did add another seasonal worker to the highway budget to handle the extra mowing that's anticipated because when you irrigate fields, the grass grows longer and it grows faster. So we really tried to take a comprehensive approach to looking at this from all sides so that we can preserve this resource for the town once the investment is made.
Barbara Huntley, Pleasant Street. I just have a question because I'm in a Butts. And I don't know, Mary, maybe Mary knows the answer to this. But I know we had water problems when the school was first built. And the water comes when the black, I think it was the black tops that were put on the, on the, over the grass areas. And that filtered the water over to us. And Tommy Door had a lot of flooding. And there's a stream that runs right through his yard and it affects the side of our yard too. And I'm just wondering, number one, about the aquifer? And number two, where is extra water going to go?
Let's try to get it brief and get done here. You're done? Are we done?
Well, I just wanted to respond to her question. I just wanted to respond to her question. All right. So regarding the well and the aquifers, and Dave also brought this up as well. When we were speaking with vendors and getting pricing on things, we did talk to a well company that they did look into recent wells that have been drilled in the area and how much water they were getting out of those wells. He didn't seem to have any concerns as to like the amount of water that we're going to be able to get to support the irrigation system based on what he was seeing on recently drilled wells. And then just again, regarding the runoff and creating more moisture and swampy areas, the irrigation system, A, is on the other side, just where the baseball and soccer fields are. And B, it's not going to be creating excess moisture. So it shouldn't be a problem.
Are we ready to vote? Okay. I want to get these out and practice up because we need them for the next couple of articles after this too. We're going to vote electronically on this one. The motion is the same motion that's in the, that's printed on page 15 in your book for Article 27. And I'll now ask you to vote. You may begin voting now. Yes or no on this motion? I'll close the voting and we'll get the results. 116 yes and 17 no. Motion passes. We got three more articles. Oh, boy. On page 16, Article 28, a zoning bylaw amendment regarding digital municipal information signs. Jay Teach of the planning board.
Mr. Moderator, I move to add Section 970, digital municipal information. Try that again. I move to add Section 970, digital municipal information signs to the Berlin zoning bylaws as described in Article 28 of the warrant.
The motion is the same as is printed in the middle of page 17. And it includes all of what precedes it in this article about digital municipal information signs. It's a whole new section of the zoning bylaw.
Okay. In order to describe this, I need to tell you a story.
Now, before you do that, we'll give you something else. Do we have a planning board report?
We have what? Oh, yeah, you want that first.
That's the one I need to have. We have to record that in the, in the record of the meeting so that when it all goes to Boston to get approved as a bylaw, we have the full package.
Okay. The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April 9th, 2024 to consider comments concerning Article 28 on the town meeting warrant to be held on May 6th. At the planning board meeting on Tuesday, April 9th, the planning board voted three in favor, two opposed to Article 28.
So the planning board voted three in favor, two opposed to Article 28.
Okay. Start my story here. So there once was a sign in front of this school. Looked like that. It used the technology of the day, which was plastic letters. Along came the great hurricane of 2020. And the poor sign, its wooden legs could not hold up to Mother Nature. So after a period of mourning of a couple of years, John Campbell, our principal, had an idea. Why not have an LED sign that instead of going outside in the wind and rain and snow and putting in the plastic letters, he could program it from his office? So John took his idea on a tour of the town buildings. He went to the select board, the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, I think the highway department, some of those places twice, and found a lot of hurdles to getting this through. Not the least of which is 10 pages in our zoning bylaw are dedicated to regulations for signs. And the bylaw is about 124 pages and we don't update it a lot unless there's a need. So this one was last updated before LEDs existed.
Jay, if you want to take the microphone off so you can run that while you're doing the show, it's okay.
So at the planning board, we started, we started talking about this. There were, and at the same time, because we were kind of split on the standing board, I started interviewing actually many of you to see how you felt about it. And I found that most people, when you mentioned an LED municipal sign, were thinking of what's in Hudson, which is bright and colorful and lots of motion and really doesn't seem suitable for Berlin. And I also had people saying, what do we need it for? Right? So it kind of got stuck until the arrival of blinky. So I think it was Fred from the highway department who set this sign up, probably initially for road closures. But over time, it started to give us other important information, you know, town meeting and the elections and then the twink, results of the twinkle tour. And it was the first time in the 16 years of, that I've been living in town and donating to the fishing derby, I actually knew what it was and was able to bring my grandchildren there. So that kind of was a game changer. And I, I got a, we, I assigned the, the planning board members to go off and see if they could find a sign, I mean, a digital sign in a surrounding community that might really fit with Berlin. And on the way back from, on the way back from getting my motorcycle fixed one day in Northborough at the intersection of Route 70 and 140, you can see right there in the circle very clearly, a nice digital sign. Oh, was that Boilston? Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm on the planning board. So with a little bit of photoshopping, I came up with this design here and went back and started interviewing people again. And there was a lot more enthusiasm for it. So back at the planning board then, we got a little more serious about it. And when you dig into it, the requirements for something like this that would make people feel comfortable with it, there's just a lot of, there are a lot of things. And, you know, the, the size was one of them. In fact, we didn't even get that right. You'll see in the warrant, we're going to have to make a change because we made a typographical error. But on your lap right now, you should have in the warrant, a list of all the different things that we came up with to regulate these signs. And one of the most important ones was what's going to be the content on the signs? And initially, I wanted to go beyond just the sign for the replacement of sign from the school, but also add one in the town center. And so the content you'll find in there is municipal things like public safety, activities and events. And then for the schools, it would be messages for parents and students. Another big issue was where are we going to put the two signs? And so the first one, in the document, it says within 500 feet of the school. So it could go back where the original one was and that read X at the entrance to the school. And the second one, it's kind of hard to figure out exactly where to put it in the town center. So what's in the bylaw, the recommended bylaw is 1,000 feet from the center of town. There actually is a municipal sign in the center of town. I didn't even realize it. So I won't go over all of the line items in the proposed bylaw, but if you look, they're all in the warrant. And probably the, the other more important one is who's going to be responsible for deciding what content is allowed and what is not? And so what you see in there is we appoint two content managers, one for the school and one for the center of town. One reports into the select board, the other into maybe the school committee as a way of managing what messages are appropriate. So we had a, we had a public hearing, as I mentioned, and got a lot of good input. But I would say there were a lot more concerns about the one in the center of town than the one at the school, particularly where is it going to be located? And there still are people who are concerned it's going to end up looking like the one in Hudson that is not really appropriate here. So the suggestion, actually Tim suggested at our hearing, that maybe it would be a good idea to start with the school, allow one sign there. A group of people need to get together to actually design the sign and get quotes for it and get it funded. That's not what I'm talking about here. It's only about allowing the zoning to allow it. And the first thing we're going to want you to vote on tonight is, do you want to vote on two signs or one? So we can either vote two signs as the bylaw is written, one in the center and one at the school, or we can modify that to only vote for the school. Let some time go by, get that installed, see how we feel about it before we come back and vote for the second one in the center of town. So, oop, where's Mr. Moderator? Oh, there he is. So do we, do we want to discuss this first and then I have the motion to modify it to only one?
It's up to you.
Okay. Because the, the motion I have here is to amend Article 28 by removing Section 972.1, which is the town center sign, and then renumbering it and also correcting the dimensional error.
So that would mean we'd only be, only the school one would be in the new bylaw this, to start with.
That's right. That's what this vote is.
This is a motion to amend Article 28 as follows. By removing Section 972.1 and renumbering Section 972.2 as 972.1. Okay? And then secondly, by amending Section 973.1 as follows. The dimensions of the DMIS shall be no more than aluminum- illuminated surface of 15 square feet and the height from the ground at the top of the sign, eight feet. Okay? This is an amendment to what's written in the book. And this will be voted on, make this decision first. At this time, I will open the floor to talk about this amendment. In other words, taking out the one for the center of town for starters. Do you want to say something about that now?
That should be pretty straightforward. If you vote yes on this motion, we'll only talk about the school sign. But this is an opportunity. We'd like to get feedback from you.
Abby Dukic, Highland Street. I think this is a great idea. I think we don't really know what is going on in town. And I would love to just pass both of them. I know that I'm probably, I don't understand the whole amendment thing. I mean, I do, but and I don't know how to get that feeling from everybody without going through all this trouble. But while we're doing is voting for zoning. So those of you that perhaps are worried about the town center sign, we will get to vote again and we will get to vote on its design. So I feel like that that's not a problem at all. And I'm super a fan of this two-sign zoning bylaw.
John Stephan, 196 South Street.
You need to get closer, closer, closer.
Closer? John Stephan, 196 South Street. I'm in favor of the two signs rather than one, particularly since if you put it by the school and South Street is currently closed. So it minimizes its use. Right? And the other night, there was a discussion about, and this is not making any comment, but there was a school committee meeting for their budget. I had no idea that that occurred because the only place it was put up was on the current minimum sign by the school. So I think the more information, the more communication, the better. And I'm in favor of the two signs, not one. So I would like to vote down no for the amendment.
Brenna Ewing, 227 Pleasant Street.
Closer to the mic.
Brenna Ewing, 227 Pleasant Street. I agree with both speakers. Exactly what the last one said, that we didn't know about what was going on in the school committee and they didn't have a way to communicate to us because we don't have signs. So yes to both.
Hey, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. AJ Moses, 87 South Street. Loath as I am to admit it, I have to agree with John and and a few others. And I think we ought to do the two-sign thing because if we do one and we want the other, we have to go through this fire drill again. So, and the other thing is, the highway sign, not real aesthetically pleasing. I think we can do better. Thank you.
Someone else want to speak?
Hello. Nick Combo, 12 Lancaster Road. Like everyone else before me, I am full agreement that two signs would be better for sure. In regards to the school sign, one of the uses my high school, where I grew up outside of Buffalo, New York had, we had a very similar one. And anytime the athletics had a great achievement, there was a play going on, being able to announce those things. It was always a proud moment to see your name up there that you qualified for states, set a school record, something along those lines. It's really a pride point for the students, gives them just that little extra encouragement. As far as the town sign, I've been here for four years and we're just starting to get involved in these types of things now because we never knew it existed. This sign would be, it was one of them great four years ago when we first moved here to get involved sooner. So better late than never. We're glad we're here. The signs are, you know, a great thing to have.
Hello. Tamara Amadon, 211 Pleasant Street. And I am also
You need to get closer directly into the mic.
I'm sorry. I'm also supporting the two signs because there's a lot of people here who never go past the school. You know, for me to get here, I have to go all the way up Pleasant Street, through the center of town, come back. I would never, ever pass the school at other points. So we need a second point of information. Call the vote.
Mr. Moderator, can you recognize?
Did you want to speak, John?
John Campbell?
Did you want to speak to it?
Yes, you did.
Are we finished talking? Okay. This is a motion to amend. And we're gonna, we'll take a voice vote on this. This is to amend it so there's only one sign at the school as opposed to the two signs in the two locations. If you want one sign at the school, you vote yes. If you want two signs in two places, you vote no. Okay? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. I guess we go with two signs. And now we're back to the original motion, which includes the two signs and includes all the other provisions that are in the bylaw as they originally were. Yep.
We need to make the other part of the amendment.
Talk in the mic so I can't hear you otherwise.
So the, what we just voted down also included the changes to the dimensions.
Talk so we all can hear you. I'm sorry.
Sorry. I'd like to move that we amend the motion to change the dimensions of the sign, which are currently, as stated, three feet wide and five feet high, which was not our intention. And we'd like to amend it to 15 square feet.
So now you want to make a motion to amend by amending Section 973.1 to read as follows. The dimensions of the DMIS shall be no more than illuminated surface 15 square feet and height from the ground at the top of the sign, eight feet. Right? You want to, we now want to do that one. Okay. That's the amendments before us now. Is there anything to be said on that amendment? It places some, it places some limits on the size and the height and so forth. Brenna?
One, one question. Does that include both sides of the sign? So it's a two-sided sign of 15 square feet each? Question mark. Thank you.
That's correct. We, we kind of envisioned a sign that looks a lot like what I showed you, which is maybe two or three feet high and up to seven feet wide. But when we wrote it into the warrant article, it was the other way around by mistake. So what you're voting for now is just to make each sign 15 square feet and the team of people that get together to actually design it and get the funding for it would decide on the exact dimensions.
Okay. Now I want to ask you to vote on the second part of the amendment, the part for about 973.1 with the illuminated surface of 11, of 15 square feet and the height about, height from the ground to the top of the sign at eight feet. Want to ask you to vote on that? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Okay. That's unanimously voted as an amendment. Now we're back to the original motion, which includes the change that we just made. And that is to add Section 970 to the Berlin zoning bylaws described in Article 28 of the amendment of the warrant and with the inclusion of the part that we just voted on. I'm gonna ask you to vote electronically because this has to be a, whoops, pardon me.
Can we ask a question first?
What? My apologies.
Lynn Ryan, 255 Central Street. I just have a question
Please hit the mic, please.
I just have a question about 977. It looks like there'll be two separate content managers. Technically, the sign that would be at the school or within 500 feet of the school would be on town property. For consistency, wouldn't you want to just have one
We discussed that and believe that the content from the school and the town are kind of different. And they should have different content managers. Already, actually, the Select Board came up with a page of criteria for messaging for Blinkie that seems to have worked pretty well so far.
Anyone else? John? Hmm? I can't. If you want to talk, talk. Yeah, if you want to talk, talk. If you don't want to talk?
I'm tempted not to talk at all because I'm feeling the happiness that you were talking about earlier. And I just needed to come up and say, I needed to come up and say two things. One, it is the place where so many people come every day. Little kids learn to ride their bikes here. Older kids learn to drive their cars here. We're in and out all the time. Not everybody, which is why we needed two signs, what a wise decision that was. But it will help a lot of people and it will start to address some of the communication problems that we've all had. So I'm gonna make you two promises and then I have one last thing. The first promise is that I will actually do the work that's expected and get appropriate quotes and go through the process so that we're not stuck here in a year or two, wondering why we didn't do things the right way. And I'm sure I'll have a lot of help with that. The second thing is I promise for the school sign with the school moderation that I will never post any bragging about the Buffalo Bills. Even when they whip the Patriots every year. I ruined the happiness, didn't I? Finally, just really quickly, I don't think I've ever seen such a good presentation. How about a round of applause for Jay?
Are we ready? Okay. We're now gonna do an electronic vote. This requires a two-thirds vote because it's a zoning bylaw. I'll declare the voting closed and we'll get the result. 101, yes. And 15, no. And the percentage is 87% in favor. Article 29, senior residential development, also a zoning bylaw amendment. Tim Wheeler, the Planning Board.
Tim Wheeler, 232 Pleasant Street. I move to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 720 Senior Residential Development by eliminating 723.2B and changing 723.2C to 723.2B as described in Article 29 of the warrant. The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April 9th, 2024 to consider comments concerning Article 29 on the annual town meeting warrant to be held on Monday, May 6, 2024. At the Planning Board meeting held on Tuesday, April 9th, 2024, the Planning Board voted five in favor, zero opposed to Article 29.
You want to speak further to your motion?
Yes, sir. So a number of years ago, we passed this article at town meeting and it became part of the zoning bylaw. But that town meeting had some problems and the Attorney General rejected some of the content. So the article that we passed wasn't approved by the Attorney General, which meant it didn't, it wasn't accepted. So then COVID hit and we tried to limit the number of articles we put on the town meeting warrant. So this one sort of poked along and didn't arise again until now. What this does is years ago, we created an inclusionary zoning bylaw that said projects over X number, I think it's five or six, have to include affordable units. And in this case, an affordable project that was a senior residential project, in order for those units that we included as part of the affordable component required by the inclusionary zoning bylaw to be counted on our subsidized housing inventory, you need to allow individuals under 18 to live in that project. So what this does is it eliminates language that said if you were under 18, you could only live in the senior residential project for a limited amount of time each year. And now that makes it possible for someone under 18 to live there through the year. It still means that someone over 55 has to be the primary resident in the unit. And our suspicion is that it's unlikely that there'll be very many individuals under 18 living in the over 55 projects that we have. But this allows those affordable units that were created, for instance, at Highland Ridge, where there are nine affordable units to be counted on our subsidized housing inventory, which is important because our goal is always to stay above that 10% requirement from the state.
Other others that wish to speak? Hearing none. We'll be voting electronically because again, it's a two-thirds vote for a zoning bylaw amendment. At this time, I will open the voting. I'll close the voting. We'll get the result. 98, yes. 15, no. And the percentage is Article 30 was the citizens petition for zoning. Karen Nielsen.
Hi. I'd like to move to pass over Article 30. We sold the
We sold the property and couldn't take it off because this is already printed.
Motion's made and seconded to pass over Article 30. Karen, before you go, just again, say what's happened there.
The property was sold, so we want to keep the zoning as it is.
Property's been sold for another use, and therefore this isn't needed, right?
Yep.
Anything else to be said on the motion to pass over? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is unanimously to pass over now. Okay, Peg.
Woo-hoo, I got the last one. I move to adjourn this meeting to Monday, May 13th, 2024, at 12 noon at the Berlin Town Office's 23 Linden Street, lower level, at which time the polls will be open for the election of town officers under Article 31. And that following the announcement of the results of the election, this meeting will
Before I call for the vote, I want to thank everybody for their cooperation, making things go well. And I also would like to ask you to help us pick up chairs after the meeting. Thank you very much. All those in favor of the adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Thank you all.